Okay, we are back for item 6.6, Lake County Health Services Tobacco Education and Prevention Program update. Health Services, come on up.
And Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I do have a hand up from Mr. Pettis. Mr. Pettis, I've asked that we go ahead and start with the presentation. And at 12:15, at the latest, if the presentation is still going, that we can pause for your students. Hopefully, that works for you. If it does, go ahead and put your hand down. And that will tell me that that works for you. If it doesn't, then I will need to figure out something else. And his hand went down, so I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for being here and being patient.
No problem. Okay, so I want to first off say good morning, or close to afternoon. And thank you for the interest in continuing the discussion related to the leading preventable cause of death and disease in California, which is tobacco. My name is Liberty Francis, and I am the project director for Lake County Public Health Tobacco Education and Prevention Program. Today, we would like to discuss a few things. One, review adult tobacco use rates and vaping rates in Lake County versus California. Bring back the draft policy that was worked on prior to the COVID pandemic with the board at the present time, as well as options to create a comprehensive policy to protect the community's health. Third, we're going to continue a discussion about smoke-free outdoor places and what surrounding cities and county jurisdictions have done to protect the non-smoker. And fourth, provide information related to the smoke-free multi-unit housing projects. Today in the room, we have Greg Dameron from Blue Zones, Joanne Cicato from NorCal for Health. And then in our Zoom room, we have a couple partners as well. Diane Kaiser, Ph.D., and she is from Health and Social Policy Network, Communities Against Nicotine. And Jay McCovery, Ph.D., and he is with Tobacco Free North Coast. So to share a little bit about tobacco use rates in Lake County, they have been much higher than the state averages for several years. The average percentage of adult smokers in California comes in around 11%. Where Lake County has been hovering in the 20s for the last several years. Clear Lake and the jurisdiction of Lucerne being the highest, around 25% of adult smokers. According, and this is according to the California Health Interview Survey. When we look at the youth surveys, they are self-reported. And that's the Healthy Kids Survey. They're looking at about 35%. Now, the thing about this survey is it's done at school. And they may or may not report all of the things correctly due to fear of getting in trouble. What we've learned working with youth in our tobacco youth coalitions is these averages are much higher. When we asked a group of students recently at Upper Lake High School, "What percentage of your peers do you think are vaping?" They unanimously said between 80 and 90%. One student actually said 100% until she realized, oh, wait, I don't vape. So she lowered it to 95. This is not only an issue in the high school levels. Recently, I have been addressed by school administrators in the elementary level, as young as third grade, that are being caught using these products on campus. The staff, the families, and the community need our support. It's no surprise that smoking causes cancer, heart disease, and other health issues. The health-ranking roadmap identifies Lake County as having one of the lowest ratings for health in the state of California. We currently sit at 56 out of 58. Our community members need our help as well. Unfortunately, there is a common misconception that the chemicals hiding behind all of these fruity-flavored vapes and e-cigarettes are somehow healthier. A fourth-grade student told me at the end of last year, "It's like it's something good to eat, like a sucker." This is the same student that shared with me, "It's easy to get his vapes." He just goes to the guy outside the gas station over there and gives him money and tells him keep the change. This is a fourth grader who's already identified how to work the system to get his addiction taken care of. In Lake County, approximately 30% of seventh graders, 60% of ninth graders, and 70% of 11th graders reported in the Healthy Kids Survey that it was fairly or very easy to access vapes in Lake County. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what a tobacco retail license is and how that's identified in our county as to something that could help with our youth use rate. It's a low cost, or sorry, it's a cost-effective way to reduce the availability of an addictive and deadly tobacco product. The policy provides resources for local enforcement and are proven to reduce illegal sales to youth. For instance, in Sonoma County, prior to their tobacco retail license, they had a youth purchase rate of about 18%. They were able to reduce that rate to 1.3% in the years following implementation. With a tobacco retail license, a jurisdiction monitors local tobacco sales by requiring retailers to purchase a local license to sell tobacco products. This local license fee covers the cost of TRL development, enforcement, and administration. Licensing enforcement is how this policy helps address issues like youth tobacco or nicotine use by regular store inspections and compliance checks to ensure retailers are not selling to minors. The consequence of fines or revoking the right to sell these products in their stores serves as a deterrent and to make sure that their employees are following the State Act guidelines. So I'd like to introduce again Greg Dameron from Blue Zones. And he's going to share a little bit about the recent SB 793 flavor ban for California.
Thank you, Liberty, and those are grim statistics. I always get depressed a little bit hearing those. But the good news is tobacco retail license ordinances are evidence-based to lower teen initiation rates. And I have some good news to share with you today. And you may know some of it, but rarely do we have a statewide opportunity to take the pulse of state support for tobacco prevention as well as local. But we had, in this past November, SB 793 went to Prop 31. And in Lake County, as we heard, we have high smoking rates and teen use rates. We had 58% in support of one of the most widespread and drastic interventions of tobacco products, 242 opposed. So what does that tell us? I'm not a voting stats analyst, but what it tells me is that we're probably aware that we have this challenge here and we have support in our community, vast support, a movement of wanting to address this. By comparison, Yuba County, close to the same number of voters, 47 in favor of Prop 31, but 53 against. So it's the reverse. So I look at that in terms of taking the pulse as amazing. Local control is key. State is not going to do much to help support that. So when we look at TRLs as the acronym, and as Liberty has mentioned, local control is key. And we have a pulse in terms of community support for this here. It's a rare opportunity, that the timing of this is coming in a good way. So that's just what I wanted to share in terms of context with that.
Great, thanks. So next, I'll just share a little bit about how a tobacco retail license can also provide opportunities to address the burden of tobacco products on the environment by reducing or restricting the sale of products that are identified as hazardous substances. As outlined in the document that I provided to you, the burden of tobacco on the environment, vape waste is particularly hazardous to the environment because it creates plastic waste through the devices, the cartridges, or the pods, toxic biohazard waste in the nicotine and the chemicals included in those products, and the electronic waste with the batteries. Currently, the manufacturers have no guidance on how to safely dispose of these products. When these products are littered, flushed, or thrown in the trash, they can leak toxic heavy metals and chemicals into our soil and water systems, posing a danger to wildlife and humans. Next, a healthy retail environment is one that denormalizes tobacco use. Joanne Cicato with NorCal for Health will now share with you ways that tobacco product placement and store advertising play a role in youth tobacco use.
Thank you, Liberty. And thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. It's an honor to be able to be here and bring to you some information that our project has learned about around tobacco advertising and how big tobacco and vape companies are targeting our children, particularly in rural areas. And I come to you today not only as the community engagement coordinator for the California Health Collaboratives NorCal for Health Project, but as a Lake County-born and raised woman who started smoking tobacco, commercial tobacco, at the age of around 12 and struggled with that addiction for more than 25 years to be able to finally quit. And I have to say that when I started this project a couple years ago, I had been out of the tobacco retail environment for 20-plus years. It's been that long since I quit. And I have to say I was aghast to learn what has happened in the evolution of not only the products, but how the products are being marketed and targeted towards younger and younger audiences. I could not believe that I was seeing cartoons and flavors for a product that you need to be 21 to use. So I want to share four points with you, and it's from a flyer that we included in your packet about product placement and advertising. The first is that I'm not alone. As Liberty shared with that data, there are a lot of youth that are starting these dangerous and addictive products. In fact, 90% of today's tobacco smokers started before the age of 18. So that's one thing, but here's what I find kind of concerning. It's what tobacco companies know. Do we need to do anything about that?
They're on it.
It's what tobacco companies know about marketing to youth. So they know that youth are three times more sensitive to tobacco marketing than adults are. They also know that if youth are exposed to tobacco marketing, they are more than double likely to start using the products. So tobacco companies know that kids who see it, try it. So what they may not know, and what we know, is that when you put tobacco product restrictions in place, youth engagement, youth initiation, and youth use go down. So what does that look like? Well, for storefronts, if we're looking at the exterior of our stores, one strategy that's being used is to reduce the percentage of windows that are covered by advertising. So the model is about 10% coverage. And that reduces the normalization that these products are part of our community, and it reduces the exposure and impact to anybody walking by, but particularly to our sensitive youth. It also has the added benefit of reducing crime and increasing public safety and reducing blight in our communities. When we look at the interior of a store, what's happening is these products are really difficult to distinguish from kid-friendly products like candy and snacks and sodas. And so communities now are adopting policies that actually create a minimum distance requirement between these nicotine and commercial tobacco products and those kid-friendly products. For instance, Delnort County just recently passed in their tobacco retail license, a five-foot minimum so that the tobacco products could not be placed within five feet of any kid-friendly products. And a few years back, the city of San Diego did one, the similar thing, with a two-foot distance. So all of that to say, our youth are sensitive. Marketing matters, and it's intentional to try to hook the next generation of customers by our vaping companies and the big tobacco. Our project is here that if the board decides to move on the tobacco retail license, and particularly these aspects of that, we're here to offer technical assistance, language, after-policy adoption support. And so again, I thank you for this opportunity to share this information with you, and I return it back to Liberty.
Thanks, Jane. So our next topic is smoke-free places, outdoor places. And I've provided support documents in your packet. One of them is the Lake County jail policy that you currently have. And then also, the Health Services Department had went 100% tobacco and smoke-free. And those are also included in your packet. And the city of Clear Lake's 2019 comprehensive policy on smoking in public places. I'm going to turn over to Jay McCovery in the Zoom room. And Jay's going to speak a little bit about smoke-free outdoor places in other communities.
Okay, I hope everyone can hear me.
Yep.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and Zoom down from Arcata. My name is Jay McCovery, and I'm project director of Tobacco Free North Coast. I've been doing tobacco control work for about 30 years now, back when these secondhand smoke policies first started being adopted in the early to mid-1990s. I've had a good career fighting against the leading cause of death and the tobacco industry that causes it. Many communities have adopted these types of policies. In fact, one of the first was a smoke-free multi-unit housing policy that you'll hear about in a minute, adopted in the city of Brisbane, just south of San Francisco. Secondhand smoke policies really started to take off in the mid-1990s into the 2000s. And now rural areas like ours in Humboldt, DelNort County, Lake County, and Mendocino County, we're playing catch-up. In fact, over these years, smoking in rural areas increased relative to urban areas. Smoking is a rural problem, and Lake County has some of the highest smoking rates in the state. I remember talking to a Humboldt State University student not too long ago. She said, "Oh, yeah, I'm from Temecula, down in Southern California." She says, "You can't smoke hardly anywhere, not even in the street." And then she kind of looks up at the air and she says, "You know, there's a lot of smoking going on around here." In fact, visitors from urban areas and other countries even expect no-smoking policies to be present. And it's really a shock to them that people are smoking in such high rates in our rural areas. But now policies are being put in place. The Humboldt State Campus and, in fact, the entire California State University system has now gone smoke-free. Following the lead of the University of California system, all their campuses are smoke-free. Most hospitals and medical systems in California now have smoke-free campus policies. And a lot of county health departments have similar smoke-free campus policies. At the 25-year anniversary of the tobacco control programs in California, we celebrated the fact that these secondhand smoke policies not only protect non-smokers, especially vulnerable people like children and the elderly, but they also help smokers cut down and quit. That's why the smoking areas in urban areas are now lower than in rural areas because they have these policies. The secondhand smoke policy that Clear Lake adopted, I believe it was 2022, is a really solid policy. There's nothing in there that would be at all wrong about a policy to improve the health of all of Lake County. And the good news is that these policies are basically self-enforcing. As in Lake County's policy, it's required that no-smoking policies be put in place. And most smokers want to comply. In fact, they want to cut down and quit. So when they see a no-smoking sign, guess what? They're not going to smoke there. Now, there'll always be a few people that say they're taking away your, you're taking away their liberties, or, you know, they have a right to smoke and what's next. But I remind myself, that's the addiction talking. Most people want to do the most, the right thing. And when they see a no-smoking sign up, they're going to comply. So outdoor areas, public places, building entrances, plazas, recreational areas, community events, all of these things are included in the Lake County policy. And those are pretty much standard in secondhand smoke policies in urban areas throughout California. And that's about it for me. I'm going to pass it on to Diane, I think, is next. Or if there are any questions, we'll get to that later.
Yeah, I just have one more thing to say before I pass it on to Diane. Every year, the American Lung Association puts out a report card for the state of California. They identify a grade similar to a report card at school, A, B, C, D, F. And for many years, Lake County as a whole has been in the F category for each jurisdiction. When this outdoor smoking policy was passed for the city of Clear Lake, in that category, their grade went up to an A. Currently, the city of Lakeport is at an F, and the county unincorporated is at an F. So this is something that we are encouraged to educate folks about to improve that score as well as our health rankings. So I will now pass it on to Diane Kaiser. And she has a little discussion about smoke-free multi-unit housing.
Hey, thank you, Liberty, and good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Diane Kaiser, and I'm with the Health and Social Policy Institute's Communities Addressing Nicotine. I'm standing in today for Gina Lyle Griffin, our lead staff member in Lake County, also with Communities Addressing Nicotine. I know some of you know Gina. Gina underwent a minor medical procedure and is recuperating well. But she asked me to present for her today on smoke-free multi-unit housing. People living in apartments are really more likely to be exposed to secondhand smoke. Smoke can enter through so many areas, through vents, electrical outlets, open windows, even cracks in walls. And interestingly enough, more than 65% of air in an apartment can come from other units in the building, not from outside. When humans come in contact with secondhand smoke, it can be inhaled, ingested, and absorbed into the body through the skin. Children are especially at risk, and their lungs can be permanently damaged by such exposure. Seniors, disabled persons, those suffering from other health issues are at a greater risk and for further complications from exposure to secondhand smoke. And many older people in particular have pets, and actually, even pets when exposed can be affected. Several years ago, in the city of Fireball, which is in central California, Fresno County, the city council heard testimony from the parents of three children who had to sleep in their van parked outside their apartment because two of the children had asthma. And smoke entered their living space from their next-door neighbor and their upstairs neighbor. Needless to say, that ordinance passed, and those children and others are actually able to stay and sleep in their own beds. As seen in your packet, there's a document entitled "U.S. Laws for 100% Smoke-Free Multi-Unit Housing." And as of last month, January 2023, 77 California municipalities at the city and county level are now prohibiting smoking in 100% of private units of multi-unit housing rental properties. Five California counties have passed laws, and these laws are working well. Smoke-free multi-unit housing has become an amenity in California. Even the California Apartment Association is helping out with model smoke-free leases. Landlords are saving money not having to totally refurbish an apartment or a property where smoking has taken place. As a landlord myself, I could not imagine allowing smoking inside a property that I wanted to retain its value, especially knowing that less than 12% of all Californians smoke. So it seems, marketing to 88% of the population would surely be better for business. Our organization, the Health and Social Policy Institute's Communities Addressing Nicotine, is available to the Lake County Board of Supervisors to bring a more in-depth presentation on multi-unit housing policies. We can assist with implementation and enforcement techniques at the board's request. We have assisted in implementation all throughout California, including Plumas, Amador, Humboldt, and Fresno Counties. We specialize working in rural areas. I want to thank you so much for your time this afternoon. We appreciate your interest and your concentration and your efforts on behalf of the health and safety of the citizens of Lake County. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Diane. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Pettis at this time.
Hello, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. My name is Jada Martinez. I am the secretary of the ACT Club, which is an all-children thrive at Clear Lake High School. Our goal is to promote, you know, healthy environments at our school and just in our community in general. And we would like to voice our support for the flavored tobacco ban as well as banning tobacco from public spaces. Since we believe tobacco has great potential to be harmful and should be limited when possible, we agree on the idea of a tobacco-selling license since this brings up a proposition of generating money while ensuring a deterrent for minors. Ultimately, we are in support, but we would also like to see our youth being supported who are already addicted to these substances and will be adversely affected by these policies. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for that support. So I just want to, on behalf of the whole team here, just want to thank you for the opportunity to present this wealth of information. I know that there's a lot more support documents provided in the packet that we gave you to further research any of these areas that we've talked about. We look forward to continuing We look forward to continuing the efforts and discussion related to creating a healthier Lake County. If the board is interested in any further action, we encourage you to consider the areas that we've discussed today and let us know how the partners at the table can assist you and work with the Public Health Law Center to create policies and procedures models that you are interested in.
Thank you. Supervisor Sebastian.
Thank you so much for coming today. I didn't know I had to make a request for you to come back, but we started this conversation back in 2020. COVID-19 hit, obviously, public health as an entire department started really focusing on other things, so it wasn't appropriate to make a request at that point in time. My patience was there, then it started slowly disappearing and that's when I started reaching back out and saying, when are we going to talk about this again? There is a highlighted point that I want to make that resonates in my mind again and again and again, and it was our previous director Denise Pomeroy letting us know that the last time that we did a sting operation in Lake County, that 100% of the businesses we went to that sell tobacco were selling to minors. And that is something I can't let go and that is something that we absolutely need to do. Before I keep going, I do want to share appreciation with the youth that spoke up today. Mr. Pettis's class has the ACT Club. The ACT Club is through Hope Rising, hence why I reached out to them. I want to make sure that we hear the youth voice in understanding where they stand rather than just where we stand based on our experience and our own lenses that we wear every single day. So thank you to that group and Mr. Pettis for leading the charge. I had no idea what they were going to say, but love what they said. And I think that I'll be continuing the discussion with behavioral health on what can be done for those who have fallen prey to the addiction of tobacco. So there's, I'll be brief on what I would like to see us continue on. We have a good setup for the retail tobacco license. It ensures that tobacco is not being sold to minors. There are repercussions if tobacco is sold to minors. I believe it's 30 days, yet you can't sell tobacco if you get busted once, 60 days, or is it 120 days the next? No, I think it's 120 days if you get busted twice and then 365 days if you get busted three times or something along those lines. And I think that that is something that helps make sure that that doesn't happen because that hurts. And I want to make sure that we get people to comply and do the right thing and follow the rules.
Now, is that for all retailers, that there's nobody grandfathered in? Or how does that work with new retailers?
It would be all retailers have 90 days to get their retail tobacco license to continue selling tobacco. And then there are consequences if we find you not in compliance with the rules and regulations of the tobacco retail license. And again, with that 100% from before, it to me, it's an absolute must that we have to do this. Now, there's a lot of details within there and I'm not going to get into the details. I think we want to have one specific conversation about the RTL in order to go through the first reading and the second reading, but I think that's something that I would like to see in front of the board for us to look at. Our public parks currently, I've seen no smoking signs, but we actually don't have a policy of no smoking. I want to see that happen. I know I've had conversations with Director Ewing and he's prepared for any potential changes that can occur, but I would love to make those environments as acceptable to anyone so that they are not subjected to any kind of nuisance that they shouldn't be subjected to, such as tobacco smoke or cannabis smoke. That's just not the right place for those things to occur. And I would love for us to look at this courthouse and take the example from public health and take the example from our jail facility and, I mean, which is not a perfect apples to apples comparison, but in in order to present a healthy environment. We all know that if you walk out the second floor, we have an ashtray less than 25 feet away from the door, even though on the door it says can't smoke within 25 feet. We know the rules, but we're not even following the rules on our own. And I think that we need to just extend that out and make it a our our health metrics, this is the low hanging fruit. This is the easy fix. This is the easy change. It will not make us healthy in the sense that we suddenly all live to be 100, but this, we are at 23% based on our latest community health needs assessment, when the rest of the state is at 11% for the percentage of adults that smoke. And that doesn't even include the number of youth that smoke or have access to those types of products. I think we can do better. I think we should do better and those are the things that I would like to see come back to us immediately. I'm interested in the multi unit family housing conversation, even though if we use federal grants, which we're most likely to use, it's already embedded in there that they have to follow the non smoking rules, but why not make it an across the board? So those are my my specific comments. Thank you to the entire team. I know I've been working with NorCal for Health for quite a while on this and also with Blue Zones and Greg previously was NorCal for Health as well. So appreciate everybody bringing this and looking forward to the rest of the conversation from the board.
Okay, Supervisor Green.
Yeah, first off, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone coming. Important subject. I'm probably going to part ways with my colleague across the way here on next steps. It's such an important subject. It's a matter of statewide concern and portions of our tobacco laws are enforced that way and portions of them are not. Some of the subjects you've raised here today about what retail requirements should be, hey, I will agree, our retailers are a train wreck. I've asked whether they would voluntarily remove ads. I think they're probably getting paid to place those ads, but I think moving those ads two feet away from the candy is not really the solution. There are First Amendment implications for advertisers of state legal products. There are space considerations in our retail businesses and they're just trying to make a buck. We have tried to regulate other public health issues in this county before, as recently as COVID-19, with very mixed success. And the idea that we would set up the county to be the arbiter and enforcer of these value added propositions on top of state law is problematic on a couple of reasons. One, we don't even have a business license in the county. So the first business license we would have in the county would be for tobacco retailers only. And then all the other retailers and other types of businesses in the county, we still don't charge a dime for a business license. That may be a subject for a different day, but why would we start with a TRL if we're going to start licensing businesses here in Lake County? Whatever one may take of the rights issue involved in multifamily housing, it's there. Whatever one may make of the rights of smokers who work at this particular workplace, who work for this county, who work for our cities, who work for other government agencies, we can argue about what those rights are, but do I think we're making a major health impact by moving them from the second floor to the sidewalk? No. Do I think we're making a major impact when I see people, senior citizens huddled out in the cold on the sidewalk because they happen to live in multifamily housing that requires them to not smoke in there? No, I don't know that we're making that big difference. So I see these tools in the toolbox and I am interested in hearing how they might be applied on a statewide level rather than a hodgepodge of, oh, you're in the county, you got to go do this, you're in the city of Clear Lake, oh, it's an outdoor place, you better hunker down and then figure out whatever Lakeport is up to. I don't think it is an effective way at all to force upon, basically force upon our public health advocates to go piece by piece, city by city, jurisdiction by jurisdiction, to do what the state should do. And I understand there are hurdles for statewide legislation, including our tobacco companies, including the same ones who put the referendum referendum up on the flavor ban, but it did pass substantially here. So I think there is interest in voluntary actions that will continue public health education, continuing outreach on that. I don't know for a fact that the policy goals presented here today are a proper direction for the county at this time, and that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yeah, I met I met with Dr. Pace, I think, right before COVID, like we were talking about. And I think we talked about this and we also talked about the flavors, especially when it came to menthol and attracting children, things like that. One thing I'll just, from experience, especially in the military, young kids are in at 18, you know, so cheap cigarettes, cheap alcohol, all that stuff. And one of the things I know is there were a lot of young soldiers that decided to start smoking because they felt incentivized to have an extra break to go smoke with the higher ranking sergeants. So they were like, wow, I can get a break, I can get some, you know, some me time with the guy in charge. And so a lot of them got hooked. Then, of course, high stress situations being deployed, drinking also, drinking alcohol also contributes to the addiction because a lot of them go hand in hand. So I think deterrence is a is a big deal. I think it's something that, like a low hanging fruit to work with. I think that's if if you if it's inconvenient, a lot of people won't do it. They'll just say, ah, heck with it. That's that's just from what I've noticed. The other thing is, is I noticed business licenses were mentioned, but I think, is there a way we can, they can be reported to the California business license if they're doing something or is that a different process or something along those lines? I don't know. Just thinking of that for the future, you know. I know we don't have those because it's often brought up about other things, but when it comes to, this is a California basically initiative trying to, right? This is California also working with us to do this?
There's multiple states that have tobacco retail license as well as counties and city jurisdictions.
Okay.
So it's kind of happening all across the United States, but it's not different than the state retail license.
Okay.
Because the state retail license will do state act purchase decoys, you know, the youth with to do the decoys. But like Bruno had said, it hasn't happened here in Lake County in many years.
Okay.
And they're looking like that across the state.
Okay, well, then my business license thing don't matter. But but yeah, no, I like the idea of doing these things. It's a big deal. It helps because then the store owners are like, I don't want to try it. So yeah, no, anything that we can do to deter youth and, you know, there's a generation of people that are going to continue smoking. They're not going to, my grandpa was a smoker from 10 all the way to 86 and he never stopped. He was one of the very few that probably lived that long from smoking, but there comes a point when you're just like pain management, let them do it because they're going to do it anyhow. But a lot of people are, because of some of those folks, a lot of people are like, I don't want to do that. Makes my house smell, makes my car smell, all that stuff. So it's becoming something that's dying out, but at the same time, with these new marketing schemes, it's it's not ideal. So I'll stop there.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
So appreciated. Obviously, in 2020, we were talking about some opportunities to look at the business license and and I agree, the bigger conversation are their business licenses, other business license we should be considering also, but, you know, I just, I bring it up because, you know, like you said, people are people are going to do what they what they feel their rights is to do. You know, you shouldn't do this, you shouldn't eat too much sugar, but everybody eats sugar. So anyway, Mike, I just want to come at it from, if something comes back to the board or is brought to the board, we'll have that discussion then as far as a business license for tobacco. But also, we need to look at it when we talk about who can smoke at the parks, you know, or other areas like that, that we know, and we talk about equity and inclusion, it's the poorest folks that are going to be affected by this. And, you know, that's the hard thing. Where do most of, you know, a lot of our homeless folks, they congregate around the parks, right? You know, so you make it non smoking, you know, they're going to be smoking. At one point, that might run into an interaction with the sheriff, you know, or somebody else. So I appreciate the conversation. You know, I always say it goes back to, you know, teachings inside the home, which we're never going to control, you know, how it is. I came up in a smoking family. I don't smoke, but I drove around in a car as a young man with the windows up and grandma and grandpa smoking and that was the reality of it. But did I pick up smoking? No, I did not because I didn't, I didn't like the smell. You know, so anyway, we're always talking, those are key words, equity and inclusion. And we know anything we implement like this, it's going to affect our homeless folks and other things. It is a concern of mine, if we're talking about smoke free, low income apartments, then we need to be talking about smoking low income apartments because you know, there's somebody who has to make a decision, I'm going to keep smoking. Now, where do I house my family if I'm going to do that? They can't afford to obviously buy a home. I mean, you always got to be thinking of that, you know, from my point of view. So anyway, it's it's a hard conversation, but we'll see what comes back here. You know, I did when 2020, look at supporting a retail license, you know, for the cigarettes, at least that conversation, I don't know where it is, but when you talk about equity and inclusion, hey, you can say you want one thing, but we know it's going to affect some of the poorest folks in our communities and even, you know, that's something always to consider one way or another because you can't just tell somebody no. So, you know, I don't know if any of you guys like to be told no, no, you can't do what you like. You know, I know, I don't like that, you know, and I know there are folks out there, you know. So anyway, we talk equity and inclusion, but sometimes it gets forgot about in developing policy of what I'm going to or we're going to tell someone to do. And that's, that's really important. That's really important that we do because it's always affecting policy we usually set up here, it affects the poorest folks on the smallest things, you know. It's hard to have homeownership alone in the state of California, but folks are always looking for places to rent and, you know, God forbid, you make a decision that says, well, I can afford that house, but they have a non or that apartment, but they have a non smoking rule, you know. So anyway, those are always things, you know, I just want to bring up. That's the key words right now. It seems like this decade, equity and inclusion, but it but it's messed up a lot because all these policies and things that are set up affect the most poorest and the most vulnerable people in our community. So anyway, that's, that's my thoughts. I don't know if it goes anywhere, but those are just my thoughts right now because it's forgot about, you know, it really is.
Well, I appreciate your comments and and understanding the nexus of why rural counties have higher smoking rates and what are the communities? Who are they and, you know, what could be the unintended consequences? So I really appreciate your thoughts. We have a hand up in the Zoom room, so I'm going to open public comment. It's phone 7257. Is it star?
Star six.
Star six to unmute your phone?
It's got Bart Clements. Looks like it.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Bart, if that's you.
Yes, me, can you?
We can hear you. Go ahead, please state your name. We're not able to hear you any longer. I'm going to give it one more try. Okay, I think that there's some kind of technical issue caller, so I'm going to close public comment. I don't see any other hands up. So bring it back to the board to continue our conversation. Oh, Supervisor Crandall.
Yeah, Supervisor Simon, I hear you on that. There is a lot of people that don't like to be told no, and I agree with that. My my concern about this is deterring children, so and and also ensuring that, you know, it's just discouraged in general. So that's, that's my biggest concern on that. So I know that we're not going to be able to tell adults what to do and commonly with other subjects, that's always thrown at me and I'm used to hearing no as a person in Lake County. So other people, it's like, well, you can't be told no, but they, it's true, he's right. And so I agree with that. But children are the are the focus for me, so.
Supervisor Sebastian.
I wanted to have a bit of a conversation with Vice Chair Simon. I appreciated the comments, but I'm thinking that the conversation is already downstream where we're having it because I will say that those who are poor are already being victimized by inequity of the marketing and the process to get people addicted. Hence, when we look at who is addicted, typically it's going to be the largest percentage is going to be people living in poverty and and we have to question why. And I hope that we can work on fixing that part so that it's easier for people to make good decisions later on rather than us having to force to make decisions for them because it is uncomfortable when you're adults to be told specifically what to do on every aspect of your life, that I will agree with you on. But I think that there's an issue. But I think that there's an issue in the way that it's being marketed and who is being targeted by this marketing. And it is the people who are poor, and addiction is very real. So I want to ask you a question because I didn't hear too much about it. Are you okay with moving forward with something like a retail tobacco license?
Yeah, I think I made that comment. Absolutely, I was involved with that. But my thought was really coming from, because I don't have to guess what it is to be poor. I come from a reservation. You ain't got to tell me what it's got to be to be a Native American in this country and to be desolate, to not know where your next meal is coming. You ain't got to tell me about that. To be home, we're still landless, Native Americans in this country today, which we had our land. No longer do we own it. And we have that right here in Lake County, you know? And so I don't have to guess, you know, marketing and other things, I clearly understand that because I do that. I bring thousands of people through marketing here to Lake County every day. We bring them every week. So I understand that. And so I just bring up the equity and inclusion and those types of things because I know who it's going to affect. And I, like I said, the retail license, willing to have the conversations from a business standpoint. I think we, like I said, I agree. I think we need to have business license all the way across county. I think that'll help the county. I ran into some issues on the board of, well, how'd that business start there? Well, we don't have business license, can't do anything about it. It's like, okay, well, that's interesting, you know? So having those conversations. So that's really where I come from. And obviously, not promoting for kids to, you know, absolutely, the youth is always in front of mind. But understanding, no matter what laws you put in place or anything, the family dynamics is the most important place to attack those issues and to talk to our children and to be a part of them. Now, I can't expect the government to raise my kids. That was my job. That was my responsibility to understand and make them to make critical thinking judgments as they grow up. So anyway, you know, those are some things. So not against anything, I'm just bringing it up from that point of view. You know, I don't have to guess how laws affect the poorest people because it's been happening to me every day of my life. Now, I've grown, I've gone in different positions, but never forgetting where I come from. You know, I can tell you how to make a commodity meal right now, today. I can tell you what it's like to eat in, I was never in the service, but you know what we grew up on? Military, what do they call them? MREs? The military meals where you rip it open? Heck, my fruit cocktail didn't even have water. You had to add water to it. You know, you had to make milk out of water in the powder, in which a lot of folks in Lake County have done that. And probably sitting right here in this boardroom, you know, the survival of people and those types of things. But anyway, that's where I bring it up from. The business license make it very clear. I want to have that conversation as we move forward.
Supervisor Crandall?
I just thought of something when we talked about people that are poor. I agree with the, you know, cigarettes and I hope if that's a step in the direction. But alcohol, I mean, if folks that are indigent are going to purchase cigarettes and spend $10 on a pack or whatever the case may be, then a lot of times they're still going to use alcohol too. So I mean, I don't know if that's another initiative or, but I see that kind of, again, in my experience, they kind of go hand in hand. And so I just mentioned that, I don't know, I know it's off the subject. But in talking about, you know, folks that, I know indigent folks that will spend their last dollars to get alcohol too and cigarettes. So if they have 50 bucks, they'll buy a dirty rack and carton of cigarettes if they can, you know? So that's just another thought.
So I'm in favor of bringing some of these policies back to look at. But definitely with the lens of Supervisor Simon's context that he's brought. I think the business license is a good place for us to start, and I think the healthy workplaces are too. And I, you know, we do have a smoking section right outside the door that all of us have to walk through. And that does not contribute to the health of the rest of the people that work here and the rest of the people that like to enjoy outdoor spaces. I was a smoker and I lived in San Francisco and I lived through that conversion where you could smoke everywhere to where you could smoke nowhere. And did it impact behavior? Yes, it did. It does matter. It does matter. I don't smoke anymore. It has been almost 17 years. But I was a smoker for about 12 years. So I understand how to, you know, what it's like and things that can be in place that are not necessarily beating you down with all of these laws, but create an environment where you just feel like making healthier choices. So that's where I stand on this, and I hope we can bring this back. I think we've had a lot of opinions up here. But yes.
Can we respond to any of what we heard or is that not?
Um, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just appreciate hearing from the different perspectives of being a smoker to never being a smoker and being in the, you know, in the car, which is how it was in my family too. You know, windows were up and everything. But one of the things that I've learned is that we don't have a constitutional right to smoke. That's, there's nothing in the constitution that protects our right to smoke. But we do have a, we do have a constitutional right to breathe clean air. And that's one of the things, I think, when we're looking at the protections, we're looking at protecting our youth from becoming addicts to the tobacco smoke and to where, you know, we're spending our last $30 on these things because of our addiction. So we're trying to prevent that from happening. The tobacco retail license, so the tobacco retailers have a state license. The state passed SB 793, the flavor ban. They didn't include enforcement, or let me rephrase that. Enforcement comes down to the local jurisdictions for that. So, so the counties and the cities are the ones that will be enforcing that flavor ban, but they don't have a mechanism to do that. They don't have the funds to do that. So a tobacco retail license will step in and become a self-funded mechanism to be able to do that local enforcement. So there's that. And then I think the only other thing, and asking the team to step in on this, but the, the idea that tobacco companies are targeting specifically rural, poor, rural impoverished communities to get them hooked is, I think, an equity issue right there. I think the fact that, that, I think that's an equity issue that we can put protections in place for the future. We know we aren't going to stop. This isn't about stopping people from smoking. This isn't about making it illegal for people to smoke or use these products. This is about being proactive, upstream, and working at the retail level to stop these from, from continuing to happen and creating more, more addicts in our community and healthier folks.
Thank you, Joanne. Also, I'd like to add that we would be more than happy to bring back the healthy stores and healthy kids surveys that are, sorry, healthy stores and healthy communities. We do that every couple of years and it's something that's done statewide. I was the one that actually went into all of the tobacco retailers in Lake County. And one of the specific questions is, how much is your cheapest pack of cigarettes? And I can guarantee you, they were several dollars cheaper in low-income neighborhoods than they were in other neighborhoods in this county. So it is specifically targeting low-income neighborhoods as well to create that addiction. So I'm more than willing to bring back those statistics for Lake County if you would like that.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. Trying to get some consensus here. So I'm hearing some consensus to move forward with the draft of a tobacco retail license. I would echo some of the comments, alcohol. So like, wow, we're going to do all this for tobacco and then I'm going to go to Safeway and see an entire row of liquor bottles at eye height of a toddler that gets rolled by in a stroller. So I know it's probably not, alcohol is not in the Blue Zones portfolio and you didn't come here today to do that. But if you're going to bring back an ordinance anyway, I wouldn't pull punches and pretend that if I'm putting two or three feet between tobacco and kitty stuff, that we shouldn't put alcohol on the same realm. We are talking about behavior modification. We are talking about laws that affect people's rights, whether they're constitutional rights as has been decided or rights that just exist in their own mind. And the way we proceed in a positive way is one thing. I do firmly believe this is a state-level thing. But if we're going to move forward locally on the consensus here, let's have a TRL that is a TRAL. Let's talk about alcohol. And then it sounds like there's consensus, talk about county workplace policies. Okay with that. I'm going to draw the line myself personally on any discussion, further discussion of multifamily housing policies. I think that's well beyond the county's purview, and I think we'd be well advised to stay out of that.
Supervisor Splatkey?
So in a similar vein, just wanted to, I'd love to see a first reading draft for a TRL so that we can nitpick it and provide our input and see what happens from there. And also bring a policy for parks as well as facilities such as the courthouse for discussion. And anything else, I'm open for continuing the discussion, but not providing direction to come back with something that's law-based, ordinance-based as it appears that we would need to continue to have the further conversation and better understanding of what it is that we would like to see. But those are the two things that I would like to see come back where we can look at taking action.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, and so I just, I agree. Anything that can, you know, this is, like you said, low, low-bearing fruit. It's already kind of in place. We could work on something like this. But anything that gets us to a path where we could use some of this towards something like meth. I know it's not something that you can buy in a store, but when you said constitutional right for breathing air, and I just immediately thought of communities that, you know, should have a constitutional right to live in peace, but because of the meth problem, they're not. And it's a very difficult problem that I deal with, and I know everyone else deals with in the county. So I know that's a little off-subject and sorry to go off on that, but I just thought of it when you said that. So if it leads to a path where we can use some of whatever's written in there to something like that, I'm glad we're doing something in that direction. So maybe we can tackle that later on, but.
We, well, I mean, I, we can't look at our, our health rankings and metrics and not be committed to do some action. So I really appreciate that we have the consensus to bring this back. I did close public comment, but there is a hand up, so I'll just briefly open it for caller 6205. I thought I, okay.
Hi.
I thought I opened.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I so appreciate all of your concern and this presentation. As you know, the discussion about dispensaries, cannabis dispensaries is front and center in our county. I didn't know that they wouldn't be required to have business licenses. I hope the county will look into that for all businesses because our county needs support to pay for the staff that supports the citizens and the businesses. And I just want to empathize with the group presenting about tobacco that many cannabis products are presented to look like tobacco vaping products and also candies, pastries, sodas, and cartoon-like packaging, definitely appealing to kids. And one of the issues for dispensaries is how close can a dispensary be to schools? So I just wanted to bring awareness to that this is up for discussion at the Community Development Department, at the Castleworth meetings. The next meeting will be on the 20th, Monday, the 20th of February. And I hope that we can continue to care for the children and for the people who are low-income that are being disproportionately targeted with packaging. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, we did give that direction to community development to work on the cannabis retail issue. Members of the public in the chambers.
Hi, good afternoon. Just real quick, thank you very much for bringing children into the conversation. I agree Supervisor Moak that it is an equity issue, but there's equity with our children. And our children, talking, speaking from a community member, being a community member, and also on the Children's Council, child abuse prevention is always on my mind. And when we deal with families, when children are being referred for services because they smell because of the cigarette smoke on their, on their clothes, they have no control over that. You know, when they are referred to us because the family is having difficulty making ends meet. Well, when the families have to buy cigarettes, they cannot afford to buy other things for their children, like shoes and such. So to me, that's a neglect issue, which is child abuse. So please, whatever we can do to help our poor families get out of situations like that is super important for our future, which is our children. So please just always think about our children for anything you decide to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a hand up from Amber.
That was Anna Santana, just if anybody needs to mark that down.
Oh, thank you.
From, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Amber, go ahead and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name's Amber Weir. I am the project director for NorCal for Health. And I'm actually situated, my office is up in Delnort County. And I just wanted to share two more stories actually with you about children. One is, before I even got into this position, I had a youth who was eight years old. We went to a pharmacy, picked up my daughter's medication, went to the front to, I was buying like toothpaste or something. And he was huffing and puffing, Colton, this eight-year-old I had with me. And I was like, what, what's wrong? I thought there was someone in line that he was upset with. And he's like, no, I just don't understand. Back there, they want to save us and heal us, and up here, they want to kill us. I don't understand. Well, and I was like, what are you talking about, Colton? And he's like, well, look at all the walls of cigarettes and the cigarettes that are on the counter right there next to the candy, the soda, the chips, and the lighters and the magazines. So an eight-year-old noticed it. I didn't even comprehend this as an adult because I was used to seeing it. But as a young child, you see these things on counters, go into the gas stations, you'll see them on the counters next to the candy. These are evidence-based policies that are promoted throughout the state as ways and tools, as you've heard. So there is evidence to prove that, you know, kids who see it, try it. So I just wanted to share that story of a youth that saw it and I was blind to it. And then I also have a story for a mother who lived in a smoke-free apartment. And she was in an income, you know, a lower-income apartment, and it is an equity for them. It, she, her husband was a smoker, but he chose to smoke outside, take off his jacket when he came inside, wash his hands. They were very good about not sharing that secondhand smoke with their youth and their children. The neighbor wasn't, and they had a smoking apartment in their lease. And so the landlord came in, sealed up everything, tried to help out for the child, the children. It was so bad that you could smell it in their toothbrushes, even after they sealed those apartments. We talked to the managers that are the owners of the apartments because the manager was like, that's as much as I can do. The owners were down in Oakland. They said, well, we've never had any problems with this. We've never heard about it. End of story. They didn't want to deal with it. She ended up having a premature baby, having to fly down to Oakland. They informed her of the risk of secondhand smoke with a premature baby. And they still could not get out of that lease to protect her child. She ended up moving 45 minutes away to, oh, is that my time?
Yes.
But she ended up stuck. And when you're talking about equity, it's, she doesn't have the options to try to find a new place to live like people that have money to do that and that they're lucky that they can live in a place. that they can live in a place that doesn't, um, have secondhand smoke. So it is an equity issue and I thank you for your time and I thank you for, uh, looking at these policies as a way to address, um, the health of our communities.
Director Turner?
I just wanted to correct something that was stated in public input regarding the cannabis task force meeting. The next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting falls on President's Day, so we will not hold the meeting on that date. Uh, the cannabis program manager is working with the task force to see if they want to hold a, a meeting on a different day at that time, um, or in that week, but, uh, the, we skip that meeting and then it'll be two weeks after that.
Thank you so much. Okay, now I will close public comment. I'm sorry about that. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just really, uh, quick, one of the commenters was talking about the cannabis The cannabis regs are statewide regulations. They highlight the point that this is a state issue and should be regulated as such. Um, the state regulations already prohibit marketing to children, already prohibit the use of cartoons and likenesses, uh, require childproof packaging before any cannabis exits through dispensaries. Um, and yet they are handled so differently. Again, you can get alcohol in any store in the county, but you got to go, uh, knock on the door and show your ID and do that just to prove out to use cannabis as a substance. So it's fascinating, it continues to fascinate years and years later, how we distinguish between alcohol, tobacco and our cannabis regulations and appear, appear to conflate them. So I just want to set the record straight. Uh, the state regulations pertaining to cannabis and prohibiting marketing to children and ensuring the childproof packaging is adequate, um, it's already there. Um, and yet still we have people in our community and I don't want to put out one of my former colleagues, but it's like, oh, if it's going to exist at all, we should, uh, send our cannabis users to speakeasies, uh, out of sight, out of mind, and then, and then it won't be a problem in our community. So some of these, uh, things we're talking about here, it, you know, they all sound common sense, but they're, they're all baby steps toward prohibition and we, we know prohibition doesn't work. So if these are state legal substances, harmful as they may be and adverse health impact that they may have on an individual basis, we have made choices over the years that the individual is the ultimate arbiter of that decision, not the government. So, you know, as we go down this road, you know, just be careful what you ask for because if you think a TRL is good for our liquor stores, maybe an ordinance that would force them to have a standalone business, a smoke shop only, a liquor store only, and you can't come in the door unless you show your ID and then you can go shopping for your liquor. I mean, you know, if we're going to put everything on, on the table, let's talk about that. But the idea that moving something two or three feet away from here is going to make a meaningful, uh, impact, uh, the idea that forcing people out in the cold in their own apartments is going to make a meaningful impact, it does come back to personal choices. It does come back to parental education and, uh, if you want a good model, look to our state cannabis regulations to follow. Thank you.
It, it is personal choice, but when your personal choices affect other people, I think that's where our conversation is right now. Okay, anything else?
I believe you have consensus.
We have consensus. Okay, well, really appreciate the conversation. I know this was put on hold, um, for a while, but we're, we're glad that you're back here and that we can move this along. So thank you for your time today.